Like to call the planning commission meeting for March first, twenty twenty-two to order. And first, we have public comments by anyone that is on that wishes to speak. They have a three-minute limit. So it's over to Rita.
Yes, if you'd like to give public comment, please use the raise hand feature and we will promote you to panelist. And I see one hand raised so far. It looks like Stacy V. Stacy, let me promote you to promote you to panelist, sorry. And then we will take Josh after Stacy. So. Stand by. Okay, Stacy.
Hi, Stacy Valenzuela Kenmore. First, thank you so much for bringing forward so many great points, questions and concerns for our residents, businesses, and city. It is so appreciated. Kenmore City Council adopted their first priority to add affordable housing. Kenmore had extended the six-month moratorium to not allow any permits on the TOD area after the failure of a developer to include proposed affordable housing. Before it expired, Kenmore currently passed a six-months moratorium ordinance two-two-zero-five-four-three on the TOD overlay to encourage multiple family with requirement of twenty-five percent affordable housing units at the fifty to thirty percent AMI or below. At the Planning Commission Developers Panel, most of the developers agreed that requiring twenty-five percent or more units, very low, fifty to thirty percent AMI affordable housing is reasonable and the only way to increase inventory. So why is the proposed development for seventy-five sixty J's location, as well as the proposed just posted today, seven-six-twenty Mea Roma Bothell Way, being approved with no low or very low affordable housing? Shouldn't the moratorium prevent this? I am confused. Are we required to pay the hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to appeal that the city's own moratorium should be respected and implemented by city staff? We have seen the cost go drastically up on everything needed to daily live comfortably. Electricity doubled this winter and now another huge increase on property taxes. Residents have been seeing rent raises of already struggling during COVID and accumulating balances of those increases to thousands. Management are posting late notices and evictions. We've had neighbors that are deciding to live in their cars and abandoning their homes as they are being priced out of them. Homelessness and those needing low and very low affordable housing are drastically increasing. In twenty nineteen, eighty-five percent of extremely low-income households were cost burdened. As of twenty nineteen, there were only twenty-seven units for every one hundred extremely low affordable housing units needed. Three years in a pandemic has only made this worse. Again, the developers in your panel agreed requiring twenty-five percent or more of the units being affordable housing at fifty to thirty percent AMI is reasonable and the only way inventory will be increased. I also bring forward another problem. As these public hearing notices are supposed to be posted, a minimum of ten to fourteen days prior to the start of a public hearing on the property. But residents are not being able to view these because they're not being posted timely. This one that was posted today is only prior to the appeal period, which means we must pay for any action for a Kenmore staff inspector. That is not fair.
That that is your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
I see one more hand up. Josh, let me promote you to panelist and your three minutes will begin when you speak. Okay. There you are.
Great. You got me?
Yep, go ahead.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to provide thoughts on the proposal that's been considered this evening on the updated housing element document. Some previous documents focused on this topic on the topic of missing middle housing. It characterizes rental density. But the Kenmore homeowner, however, who's actually witnessed the impact of middle housing units in my own block, in my opinion, there's actually very little that's gentle about these units. Though the corresponding proposals such as reducing parking requirements in the neighborhoods where they exist. If you look what's actually happening on the ground, increasing density actually leads to higher cost of living for everyone, increased congestion, and the slow degradation of neighborhood character. But the taxpayer who's now paying well over seven-hundred dollars a month in property taxes alone to live in Kenmore is highly concerned and opposed to many of the proposed changes outlined in tonight's document. Specifically, language in the first paragraph where this committee is currently recommending crossing out crucial words protecting the quality of residential environments and promoting and maintaining residential neighborhoods. While admittedly late to this process, I question the degree to which this committee has incorporated the feedback from taxpaying residents. At present, much of this document appears to be written from a single point of view. The simple fact that the theory of increased density leading to more affordable living simply not accurate. If you look at the table on page eight, you can actually see that the current density plan allowing has allowed Kenmore to absorb even more extremely low and low-income households than what's occurring in King County at large. For example, the number of very low-income households increased four hundred basis points over the time in the table versus declining, but by over a hundred basis points in King County. Or tangibly, if you look at my own street, one hundred and eighty-second, we recently had, or a few years ago, we had a home torn down and replaced by fourteen townhomes. That home cost a million dollars. Those townhomes now cost nine-hundred thousand dollars a piece. Meaning, we tore down a million-dollar property and replaced it with fourteen that now cost the same price. If you think about that, the only person that actually benefited was the developer. There's also a second property on my street where we've torn down a house and we now plan to replace it with two houses. If you think about that again, the million-dollar house being torn down to create two, two-million-dollar houses. Once that happens, the ripple effect on the pricing of the neighborhood will only make even more of these homes out of reach for more buyers. But with detailed only the two examples above, we need not look further than any neighboring communities such as Fremont or Ballard that adopted similar density solutions. Before we walk down this road, we should ask ourselves, are the communities more affordable? Are they more, are they less congested? And do they still maintain the character that made them great places to live? My humble opinion, the answer is no. Instead of focusing on increasing density as a proxy for affordable living, I would assert the city's primary role should be to maintain and improve the quality of life for its taxpayers and citizens. Further, I'd request two specific changes to this document.
Thank you, Josh. That is, that's your three minutes. Yeah, thank you.
Can I finish my last sentence, please? Really, I'd like, paragraph one, I'd like to see amended back maintaining residential neighborhoods. And two, the single-family zoning requirement along one-hundred-and-eighty-second North should be maintained along with their height restrictions that are currently, haven't currently been in place for a significant amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
I see no more hands at this time.
All right. Then we will proceed with our agenda, which is approval of minutes for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. They're in the packet. Is there any comments or objections to the minutes? I was going to suggest that we may want to list the panelists and their associated business or why they were on, you know, on the panel as a part of the minutes. And I would move that, we'll leave it to our our minute taker to put that in appropriately. Is there any objection to that? You know, it's a, it's a way to make sure everybody knows who was on the panel and it's a, makes it clear and transparent. So having heard no objections to that amendment, that the amendment passes, is there any other comments? Hearing none, then I declare the minutes adopted as amended by unanimous consent. Okay, so. You know, as a chair, I do have one request of staff. I understand that in the state legislature, there was a bill proposed to require things like ancestral accessory dwelling and other types of requirements statewide for zoning and land use. Or does that sound familiar, Lori or Debbie?
Right, there actually have been a couple of bills, more than even a couple. There have been several. The one that most directly influenced missing middle housing and requirements in single-family zones, that bill did not make it through the legislature and will not this session. There are, I think, two or three bills related to accessory dwelling units, and I do not know the status of those bills currently. But we're not expecting to take that up.
Yeah, I I understand that. They were in the news, however. So if the one that was particularly made the news, and I realize it wasn't passed, but I think it, we could get a link to that bill just for information. I think it would be a good, something to read to see what's happening at the state level. It's a possibility. So thank you for allowing me to say that. So next is the TOD panel debriefing memo. So Lori, are you?
Right.
Take the lead on that?
I will. So good evening to all of you. I hope you enjoyed the panel that you heard at your last meeting. I thought it was very informative. And we tried to condense the notes that we had into the summary that was provided in the memo in your packet. And what we had hoped to do this evening was just give you all an opportunity to add your thoughts about the panel presentation. And also, if there were items, policy-related items that came up in that conversation that you particularly would like us to focus on as we move ahead to draft the TOD zoning code amendments. As you know, we have language in the comprehensive plan about the increased densities in the TOD. But as part of this work, we also wanted to prepare zoning code amendments.
Okay, so let's take the first item, and that is if there's any additions that any member of the commission would like to be considered for the memo in any part of the memo. Is there anyone that has any suggestions for Lori for additions? I see Mike.
Yes, number one, the second bullet, transit available, high-capacity transit and link to light rail. Those actually don't exist.
Well, they will exist during this planning period, twenty twenty-six. Bus Rapid Transit, which is considered high-capacity transit, will provide a link to the light rail station in Shoreline.
Okay, that that's a good orientation. So really what we're talking about is Kenmore's market, potential market readiness sometime within the next twenty years, twenty years?
Less than that, probably. Again, twenty twenty-six is the BRT.
So high-capacity transit and light rail have been approved for Kenmore within the next period of time?
So Bus Rapid Transit, which is considered high-capacity transit, is approved for Kenmore and is supposed to be in place by twenty twenty-six. So four years.
Proposed has not been approved or financed.
It has been approved and it has been financed through the Sound Transit three package. And even when they went through the realignment process, Kenmore's portion of that, which includes Lake Forest Park and Bothell, continued to be on the calendar for that time period. The light rail at, in Shoreline is targeted to be open, I want to say, in twenty twenty-four. So within the next few years, we will have high-capacity transit.
Are there any more additions to be suggested to the memo? So hearing none, we'll move to Lori's second point. Would you restate what you're asking us to provide you?
Sure. So in the wealth of all the information you heard, what we were hoping was that you could identify policy directions that particularly stood out for you so that when we move forward, we, to craft amendments, we have your thoughts in mind to do that.
Derek, did I see you didn't raise your hand?
Okay. No, I'm actively thinking.
That's good, too.
It might help if I, you know, the the things that would impact how we craft regulations are ideas of about parking, affordable housing, the, the, how density is considered. One of the panelists had said, rather than use density units per acre, you should consider floor area ratio, which reflects the size of the building. Whether the design standards, which require an upper-level step back, should be reconsidered. There was, one of the affordable housing developers had said that that's a problem for affordable housing projects. And then there was some conversation about the TOD area expansion, talking about expanding the densities and affordability standards to downtown. There was a comment about whether that would dilute the effort in the TOD area, whether those standards should be an incentive rather than a mandatory requirement. So those were some of the things that jumped out at me as potential policy directions that I'd love to hear from you all about.
Derek.
Yep. So, yeah, my, my concern, one of my concerns is the parking. You know, we already, I can see up Eightieth and along one eighty-second and a variety of other roads where just multifamily homes, not apartment complexes and many family homes are impacting parking. So I just, I I'm concerned about waiving the realistic parking requirements for these projects. And assuming everyone that moves into an apartment near a bus route is going to use a bus route. I just don't think that's realistic in Kenmore. And I think the the folks on our panel somewhat agreed with that last meeting that it's not realistic in Kenmore. We're still a driving community. There's too much. You can get to your house and you can get to work, but there's too many other amenities we can't get to without a vehicle. Now, maybe, maybe that can be circumvented. One of the thoughts I had that I didn't mention last week was if an apartment community puts in some sort of a loner car thing or one of those rental cars where you rent it by the, I don't know, you flash your credit card at it and it unlocks for you and you rent it to go to the store, go to Home Depot or whatever. So it's a shared car that may be on site or some sort of a shared vehicle process that could implement, could be implemented to maybe waive some of the parking requirements. But I just can't see having cars parked all over the street and people getting their vehicles towed. I mean, this is the demographic we're trying to protect from getting nickled and dimed out on the streets. Let's not put them in a situation where they've got to defend themselves against tow trucks. And then the neighborhood, in my opinion, don't want to see cars parked all over the streets and up on curbs and trying to find places to park because they moved into an affordable housing place that didn't include realistic parking. I just, that's, I don't know if I'm articulating this very well, but that's my concern is parking running all over the place trying to accommodate affordable housing. And I just don't think it's realistic to be waiving parking requirements. And then the conversation got into can we build up another floor? And I started reading international business or building codes on that and buried myself in that paperwork. So. I I do know that five-on-two is a concrete structure with two levels now with five levels of wood or fireproof wood of some sorts. But that's as far as I got on that project. But parking, parking is my concern, realistic parking.
Thank you. More comments? Tracy?
I'm going to go back to number one just for a moment. And I also have a comment about parking. But under the market readiness, I I just wanted to note that the two thousand nineteen market study was pre-pandemic. And that's fine. But, and I know that there's probably no comparable study now. But I would just caution us to consider how the pandemic has changed things and that a study from two thousand nineteen might not accurately reflect what's going to happen going forward, given how the pandemic has affected all of our lives and is still ongoing. I wouldn't want to just stake too much on a study like that without more information that reflects our current situation. And then on parking, I agree that this is a really complex issue. And I think we need to balance all the things we know theoretically about parking, that it's very expensive to build. It is perhaps not the best use of land sometimes, that it can escalate the costs of a project very quickly. I think like all those the things we know. And I think we have to balance those with some of the concerns that Derek has brought up and that our panelists last time brought up, that we're in this weird in-between place as a community where we, I I think we have aspirations to be less car-dependent. And yet, because of where we are geographically and how we developed, we still really are car-dependent. So I think it's going to be, I think we're going to have to think really hard and grapple with it and be very careful that we're balancing those, you know, balancing those two things. So I'm interested in learning more about these recommendations that are here in the notes. At the same time that I don't feel ready to pick one as a, you know, a strong policy direction for our, our community.
Are there any further comments or suggestions from the commission? Derek?
Yeah, I had another question on the, the setbacks as, as it goes up. If I'm understanding this correctly, the higher floors need to be set back from the lower floors. Is that right? Kind of a terrorist vision? Is, is that something that we put in there as a requirement? Or where, where does that setback requirement come from and what's driving it?
Yeah, it's part of the, what are called the downtown design standards. So it it was one way to make a building not quite as imposing as you went up. It's, it's a little considered to be more pedestrian-friendly.
Right. Okay. And are there any allowable adjustments to that or workarounds if that currently like?
No.
Creating a square or a courtyard, anything like that? Is that, if you're?
I, it's possible that this, I'm, I'm not familiar enough with all the rules. It's possible that those step backs, there may be a trade-off. In in some cases, design standards give you sort of a palette of options. And you can choose two of the five or something. I'm not sure step backs fall into that category. Debbie, I don't know if you know the answer to that.
It's been a few years now since I was deep in, deep in those codes. I think it's a question we can bring back, which sort of may then influence which direction you go. Because if it's currently in a suite of choices, then that's, there's other choices. If it isn't, then the choicing would be we either sort of eliminate it or maybe we provide a suite of choices. So depending on how it currently is, might then influence a recommendation for moving forward.
Right, yeah. I I thought that's what I was understanding. That was kind of a curb appeal kind of a thing. And, but I also understood what they were saying, that it's kind of a shame to end up with a smaller unit, especially for the person living in it. For curb appeal. There's other ways to kind of tweak that, I think. But I just want to make sure I understood what that was all about. Thank you.
So do we have head nods that we would like at least a little understanding from Debbie about that issue? That's a, those, I think that's an agreed-upon request then. Okay, other comments? Other requests for directions? Ah, Mike?
Yes, get unmuted here. One of the things I keep tripping over myself, and maybe we've said this and I'm just not aware of it, is having a better understanding of what our objectives are, particularly for the TOD in terms of types of development. Because we have some choices. Obviously, have market rate development where there would be no incentives involved. We have kind of a minimal, a minimal, I say, middle affordable housing, which might creates the necessity to provide incentives for developers to want to take those on. And then, of course, the more subsidized, low-income, which would inquire not only incentives, but some other financial cash, maybe grants or something through Arch or one of those projects. Each one of those has a requirement attached to it in terms of the amount of support that it would need to have, whether that's through incentives, whether that's through tax subsidies or others. But understanding exactly what our goal is in terms of each one of those is something that I still find elusive. And I think it's difficult to understand the trade-offs we write into policy until we really understand, particularly over if we're looking at a ten-to-twenty-year period, where we're trying to get over a period of time. So that's what I'm looking for. I know we've had some direction, I think, from city council. Certainly, it's said that he wants affordable housing is our top priority. But what do we mean by affordable? At what level and what percentages? And if we want to incentivize, we need to understand what that rate or goal is before we can have a right mix, before we start trading off things like tax revenues, airspace, open space. These are all things we can, we can give up as part of the incentives. But I think we need to understand how far we need to go and what our goal is before we can make a reasonable choice.
Well, that's, in terms of affordable housing, that is one topic which we are going to need some assistance from Arch with to kind of figure, help us figure out what the appropriate level of affordability is and what that balance should be with market rate housing. In the current TOD regulations, there is a affordability requirement. So you're required to do some affordable housing units in the TOD. And that requirement, I think, needs to stay. But what the policy discussion is going to have to be about is how much and the depth of affordability. And so there are definitely going to be some policy choices. The city council, for sure, one is very interested in increasing the percentage of affordable units and the depth of affordability. I think that's sort of a message that, as we've heard. And so again, that's what we need to figure out in terms of the choices so that whatever is selected as the percentage and the depth of affordability is balanced and makes sense because you still want to have it so that a develop, it's, it, projects get built. So definitely more to come on that, Mike.
Lori, go ahead.
Thanks. So this is actually a perfect time to talk about some timing issues. As you know, as we've been moving forward with the land use and housing elements, we also were intending to bring forward the missing middle housing amendments and the TOD zoning code amendments. There's been such an interest and, and both from the city council and from the developer panel that we are considering breaking off the TOD regulations from the other three components. So that what we would be bringing forward, hopefully for hearing in May, would be the land use and housing elements and the missing middle code amendments. Would be the land use and housing elements and the missing middle code amendments. And then on the heels of that, we would turn to the TOD regulations to give us a bit more breathing room to allow Arch time to do the analyses of feasibility at different levels of. Affordability at different percentages, so we're anticipating that that work would probably go into June or July. So nothing is set in stone yet, but I'm just giving you a preview of what we're thinking, because this is a fairly significant change to what we were expecting.
Mike?
Thank you, Laurie, that's very helpful, I like your sequencing there, because I think having a more solid numbers orientation. Before we moved into TOD and particularly to the related question, should we extend the TOD? Standards into downtown, so I think having that information ahead of those decisions, I think would be very helpful.
Tracy?
I agree with Mike about evaluating. Incentives for developers against what we as a community need and what we want for ourselves. And I would go so far as to push it beyond just what we want in terms of affordability, but also. We've spent a lot of time talking about people oriented developer development, for example, like that seems to be like a value of ours and. I would, I want to make sure that we're holding those in mind when we're thinking about these incentives and that we're not. Giving up on what our vision for our community is to incentivize developers. And. And then on the affordable housing bullet point here, number four. I I thought I heard most of the developers say. There seemed to be universal agreement to me that affordability needs to be at the twenty to thirty percent. Maybe twenty five, it was somewhere between twenty and thirty, maybe other planning commissioners can remind me, but I I heard it as being far higher than ten percent minimum. That that should, that that we should require in the TOD. Twenty five, Derek says. Yeah. And I know that that's the direction our council is going, I know that's the decision that they made. For the interim TOD requirements. And so I'm not sure. Yeah, I think we need to keep that in mind.
So that. I think I heard that.
Nodding heads that that's something that we would like some policy direction to to develop.
And then something I'd like to know, but this is also under the affordable, affordable housing bullet point. Allow flexibility to transfer affordable housing offsite, I would, I'd like to understand this better. I want to understand why. And I want to understand. Where it would go. If the aim of the TOD is to create greater density so that people have access to transit. I don't, it's, and we have affordability requirements, it doesn't make sense to me to allow offsite transfer, but maybe I'm missing something, that's something I feel like I need more information about.
Christina?
I I second that, I had questions about that as well. As far as like keeping people who are transit dependent near grocery stores and things that they need to live. Putting it offsite, what exactly does that mean?
Um, Debbie or Laurie, would you like to just?
Yeah, I I I just, I just want to say that the what is in front of you is just sort of a summary of the points that we heard the developers say, it's not to say that. Any of these points that they say are recommendations, this is just a summary of points. So on that, you know, would you allow offsite housing, I guess it would be then a question of under what circumstances? So why would you allow that? Well, the question, if there is an inclusionary component, would you allow that inclusionary affordable housing to be built? Somewhere else and under what circumstances? So it's something to that you would. Have to consider, you know, maybe there is another project being built that. Might be looking for affordable housing units and say, well, we can take more, so we'd like to take your additional units, so that, you know, there may be some circumstances. But I think it's sort of fleshing that out a little bit in terms of, does it make sense? And under what circumstances does it make sense for transferring housing? To to offsite to another location.
What does the council, the commission want to do about that, Christina, did you have your hand up again? Okay, go ahead.
Um, at that meeting, there was another thing that was mentioned was that there's a time limit. On the affordability of these units. Like ten years or or something like that. Is that correct?
So, yeah, it's it's talking about two different things, so the the time limit, there is a multifamily tax exemption. And that is what some of the limits are, so it's on how how long would you get these tax benefits for? But in terms of the limits on how long affordable housing, there are usually covenants put in place that the units remain affordable. For either the life of the project or a significant period of time, fifty plus years, for example. So it's not saying that they would be affordable for for ten years, I think, I think there's, there's, there's a lot of conversation going on there. But I think the ten years was in in reference more to the multifamily tax exemption, which is between, actually, that's between eight and twelve years.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mike?
One of the things I'd like to understand a little bit more. Debbie or Laurie is in providing multifamily tax exemption. For a certain level of affordability, however, depending how we define that. I'm interested in understanding what the. You're relieving the owners taxpayers of the property of a property tax. Some portion of which would come back to Kenmore to support infrastructure, roads, everything else in the city. You know, if that tax support is excluded or given away as part of an incentive. How does the city cover that expense? Or is this realistically, how much of an expense would that be? If we've got a ten year tax exemption on a specific property. Does that create an increased tax burden? That needs to be funded somewhere, I assume, up by other taxpayers within the city, or is it a minimal amount? And we'll be looking at some sort of bond financing twenty years down the line. I'm just concerned about, for instance, early on and when you're listening to a lot of the concerns about folks who are supportive of middle housing. Was the idea that there was overdevelopment by cities early on where they gave away. A lot of tax benefits and whatnot, but then came back to the city, which they didn't have a tax base to support. I just want to make sure we're not falling into that same trap. Or at least we understand what it is and and plan for it.
Well, I I certainly. Don't feel prepared to go into a a discussion about multifamily tax exemption program this evening. I would say that this was first implemented in two thousand and seven and it was just on the Kenmore Village properties, that's where it first was implemented. You have to define a geographic area for applicability. And go through a whole process to assess the impact of that, because it's not just on the city taxes, it's on other tax collecting agencies. Maybe, maybe that's not the right term, and then that area was expanded to the the TOD. So there is still a defined geographic area where that is applicable, so I can say that there's a defined area, it's not citywide. And when you do define the area, you have to look at those tax implications before you implement it. And then there are regulations for how you apply for MFTE for a specific project. And how that is calculated and things like that, but that's sort of a very brief, not very in depth. Look at MFTE and and again, I think so that there's also short answer would be that would be the MFTE would probably not be part of this. Package moving forward either.
Thank you, Debbie, that was more than I expected you to provide at this time, but it is something that I think we need to understand better, particularly if we're going to look at expanding that. As an option into the downtown area, we just need to understand what's the obligation that we could potentially be taking on. Is there some limit to it, is there some way to limit it, just having an understanding of the, you know, that the ten. Down the year, ten year, twenty year magnitude of that, when we have to replace streets or or sidewalks or water. So which. Just don't want to make sure that we have the tax base in place to manage that, that.
Christina?
With some of these. I'm gonna use, even though it it might not even be a thing, the MFTE. Let's say a developer gets all these benefits. Are we, do we put into place? Any kind of penalties or anything if they reneg on the agreement? I don't know all the specifics, but I have heard. That there have been a development near downtown that got an MFT exemption. And then sold the property and then reneged on the affordable housing component, I don't know the specifics, I'd have to research it more. But in granting these benefits to the developers, is there any loopholes? That they can get out of their part of that agreement, like. Yes, we'll build affordable housing, then they get all the variances and all of this stuff and then they end up not building it. Does that make sense?
I I think what you're asking is. If they got the benefits and didn't build the housing, well, then I think, yeah, you've you.
Or or didn't include the afford, the amount of affordable housing that they agreed to. Like the the ten or twenty or twenty five percent.
I I don't know which project you're referring to, there have been a few, not many projects that have received MFTE again, because it's only in a defined area. And but yes, if you have MFTE, then you have to meet the requirements for affordability. Or all those rules to to remain in effect, so I I'm not aware of a project that is not complied with the rules.
It would it be, but the other way to say it is until they built it. And it's been approved, the MFTE does not take effect, is that another way to say it?
That's probably another way to say it, yeah.
And there are, there are enforcement mechanisms.
Yes.
I thi- I think that was, maybe Cristiano was at at the heart of your question, what are the enforcement mechanisms?
Well, I believe, if I may, I believe Debbie said at a prior meeting that there's legal. Parts that go on to the title. That require them to keep the affordable housing element in that property. Permanently, does that, did I say that right, Debbie?
That there is, I would say MFTE is a complex project, is is a is a complex topic. As is affordable affordability and affordable housing, so I think, you know, we can maybe have to come back and give you more information about MFTE. And how it relates to a property development, what are the regulations and how that relates to affordability? So rather than, I say, giving you a little taster for it, but I cannot give you a full answer now because I'm not prepared this evening. To have that discussion on MFTE and affordability, so I hear you loud and clear that based on your questions and. You can keep asking me questions and I'm afraid I'm gonna have to give you the same answer, is I'm gonna have to come back with with some more information.
Thank you very much. So we're about ready to move on to our next agenda item unless someone has a very important Tracy and then Mike.
I I'll just go through very quickly all the notes I had on this first part, I was waiting for us to hit each section, but I think that's not really happening. And for the height. And notes, I'm really interested in. I think it was the 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 person who's been working on the metro. TOD, the the woman. I can't, I can't remember her name, I'm sorry, but she. Yeah, um. Or maybe that's in a different bullet point, but she was talking about perhaps allowing increased height. If a developer could would set step back from our critical areas. And then put that land into, and it sounded like she was suggesting giving it over to the city. So that they would not be required to pay taxes on the portion of land that they couldn't develop in, I thought that was a really interesting idea. And could be a way to put some of our critical areas back in the public domain and allow us to protect them. And I am, do have concerns though about. What building up close to some of our critical areas might be, for example, by the hair and mercury, how increased height would affect the hair and mercury? So I think it's something that requires a closer look in terms of kind of a granular look at where this development is happening, but that was all interesting to me. And allow, so then this is related to allowing additional height where high water table is a challenge. It was interesting to me, although if the if the water table is high, then that indicates that it is probably near a critically significant, critical area. And and so I'm I'm not sure if allowing additional height there makes sense, but it's again, an interesting idea. On the density, they were suggesting that FAR is a better tool than a maximum number of units, I wondered, we've, we've talked a lot about FAR on the planning commission and I find it a really interesting idea. But I wonder if how that relates to doing form based code, the kind of code that Optico Design talks about. For their missing middle housing and what if that would lead to different results? Or better results or the results that we want. And I was surprised that that didn't come up. Among any of the developers. For incentives for expedited review, I'd want to know more about what that means. Because in previous discussions on the planning commission, I think we've established that our permitting is already really fast. And I'm not sure. If, number one, if we can make it faster, and number two, what we lose if we do make it faster. For green building, I feel like builders should be doing that anyway, they shouldn't need incentives to do that, quite honestly. The city helping pay and provide infrastructure, show projects pencil out, I I initially kind of felt grumpy about this idea that taxpayers shouldn't put the bill, but then I was reminded of our. Strong towns presentation by Joe Minicozy and I was remembering how he talked about. A community deciding that they weren't going to invest in, I think it was like a plaza like area outside some buildings. And they really like that they, that allowed them to get what they really wanted for their community and and and. So I'm interested in in that idea too. And then I think, yeah, that's all I had in my notes.
Anyone else? Mike, there you are.
Uh, design standards, open space, I'm interested in the in lieu of options, whether or not we actually would take any of those into place. I'd like to know for the future. What the feasibility would be of pooling those fees and then earmarking them to a specific purchase, for instance, purchase and maintain a parks or other public spaces. So those funds don't get soaked up or absorbed in some other purpose.
That's an interesting idea, Mike.
Yeah. This, we would not be the first municipality to have that concern.
And see it go sideways.
Yes. That's dedicated, there's differences in funds in cities about dedication and ones that can be transferred about. So that's.
Yeah, as in within. Uh, city code and accounting, there are ways to set up a purpose specific trust fund. And that's what I would be looking at, but the feasibility of that, let's get some advice on how we would do that. Assuming that we'd actually consider the, which there are practical reasons to want to do that. But I think we don't want to lose sight of what the purpose of that funding was and not have it co-opted for something totally unrelated.
Any last comments? Hearing none, we're off to item number two on the agenda. Meaning the next item on this, on this part of the agenda, yes.
Right. So the second memo in your packet actually included many, many pages of factual information. That is the sort of the backstory for the land use and housing elements. It also includes the map, which we need to talk about, the comprehensive plan land use map that would eventually be implemented by zoning. So I'll start with the housing element. I don't intend to walk through everything, but I just wanted to let you know that, that the many of the requirements in the countywide planning policies speak to what should be included in our, they call it a housing needs assessment. I mean, it is itemized. Item by item. And so we have tried to include all the information that was requested in those policies in this background. And I, I have to offer so many thanks to Mike Stager with Arch for working on collecting all of this data. I also need to tell you that we're sort of his pilot project for this comprehensive plan go around. And that in many places you will see that we've referred to an appendix and then figures in the appendix. Arch is working on this sort of the Arch jurisdictional housing analysis, which includes information on all the jurisdictions and that would be the information that would be in our appendix, but it's not ready yet. Using us, using Kenmore, Mike has, has helped figure out what information is needed, where to get it, et cetera. So that's the background on the housing element. And so maybe we could start there. And again, it's, it's factual information. I don't think there's a lot of policy content to it.
So just a reminder, Lori and Debbie are not looking for wood wordsmithing. If you would like to practice wordsmithing, we could do that. I would ask that you would do that outside the meeting with one of them individually. So we'll start with, I guess that's number five dash one. Is there any comments on that page? Mike?
Actually, ahead of that, in the introduction and background under purpose. Food for thought. And again, I don't, as Dwight said, don't want to get into wordsmithing here, but give this back to staff to think about. The housing development really impacts the city's future revenues. And the ability to be able to provide the level of services that are currently expected by citizens, then also for the new development. I'm concerned that we don't recognize this in the purpose statement. We have a lot of good, I think valuable and important aspirational pieces in that purpose statement. But we don't have anything that balances those aspirations against what is actually doable in terms of the financial stability or maintaining the financial stability of the city. So I asked, should we have something that in that? Or do we want to keep this generally to be a, a more aspirational point of view?
And you mean a financial stability and in regarding like city services and infrastructures?
Certainly. I mean, all of the things we just talked about to the extent that you're offering incentives. Those incentives come with a price tag. And those are create a limit on the capacity of what we can provide in terms of services in the future. And if we're giving up future revenues in order to purchase those those benefits, that's fine. But I think we need to recognize that there is a limitation. And when we're looking at these trade-offs, do we want? Don't, don't we need to be cognizant of that and understand what the level of those commitments would be? And use that as some kind of a countermeasure against what we commit to and what we can, what our expectations are.
I see head nodding on that. Is that correct? Head nodding, so.
Yeah. I, I would, I would agree and I would like to make sure we keep a focus on equal percentage and it's got to balance. I, I agree, that's we can't, we can't have it both ways. So it is an interest for sure.
Right, Lori, I see you eager to say something.
Yeah, I, I'm totally lost about what you're looking for here. I don't know whether we're talking about the importance of property tax to funding city services. Or we're talking about adequate public services to and utilities to serve new housing, which we would probably discuss in the public services and utilities element, which are the two of the next things on your docket. Or we're talking about making sure that if we're providing affordable housing, that we're not going so far that we have somehow affected the city's ability to service all of its neighborhoods. I don't know where we're headed with this.
Mike?
Well, I would. I'll be quick, Tracy. I would say your last comment is to, just to my point. Is that as we make our decisions in executing this policy, that we take into account the need to have an ongoing and viable, an endurable, a durable financial structure within the city.
Interesting.
This calls to mind, Mike, and, and maybe I'm off and just going off in my own direction and not following yours, but this reminds me of the conversation we had when we were crafting, was it the vision statement for the city? And we did include a statement about wanting to cultivate, I can't remember exactly what the language was, but it was called like a financially healthy community or strong or something. It had a strong Townsend flavor to me. I think maybe that's even where we got it. And, and, and actually, if we had something aspirational in that direction in this housing elements introduction and background, I mean, that would fit with the rest of what we have. And because I think that, that the language is aspirational, I think that's what it is at this point. Is that correct? And that would be, I mean, that would be fine with me if we wanted to restate that at value here.
That's exactly what I was looking for, Tracy, to hark back to that original statement, to link us back to our original concern. But we got some, we have some balance in this.
Next item. See none. Page five two. Seeing none, we'll go to five three. So I have a question, why is there, it seems like I read throughout this whole housing element. There's really not any comments on environmental issues. Did I miss something or? Form me in. Why that is?
Yeah, I think it appears in different places. I think we certainly, the commission added it to the purpose statement. And there are places in the goals, objectives and policies where you had language that specifically talked about critical areas. In this background information, we don't have information about the city's critical areas because that's in the natural environment element, all of the background information about wetlands, streams, the maps, et cetera. So it's in a different chapter of the comprehensive plan for the environmentally critically, environmentally critical area background information.
Tracy?
Well, kind of to that point, and I, I might be opening a can of worms here, wait, I'm sorry. But we. Yeah. We do have, and this is going back to five two, his history of discriminatory land use and housing practices. Which I am. That needs to be acknowledged. That needs to be said and it needs to be addressed. We could have a section about history of the environmental treatment of our land as it's related to our housing development. I mean, like, there could be a section like that. It didn't occur to me, Dwight, really, until you brought it up, although I too noticed that there wasn't a lot about the environment sprinkled in, except for in the purpose, which I very much agreed, appreciated, and thank you for including that. I don't know why, why we don't, maybe is there a reason that we don't have a section like that, but we do have one on discriminatory land use. I don't know.
I think this is probably, this is probably too simplistic. But the housing is more sort of people oriented and the natural environment is more land oriented. So again, I know we're trying to walk that fine line between not repeating everything in every section, because that sort of defeats the purpose of having different chapters on different topics. So I think that's probably why we're speaking less to the environment in this chapter, because it's related to housing and is more people oriented. So whether we need to have a section here on how does housing affect the land? Specifically, I mean, I'm not, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, I, I think if, if you want to include something. We could talk about, we could add a little paragraph like we do about discriminatory actions and displacement risk, we could add a paragraph about relationship to the city's critical areas. Again, I, I wouldn't go very far with that because I think it's duplicative and, and this is not the natural environment chapter. And I know they're all interrelated. We've had this conversation lots of times. But I don't think you can just ignore that there's a very large chapter about the natural environment that speaks to how development occurs near critical areas. But I think in terms of adding it to this background, I think that actually is a good place to add it if you want to do that.
And we could reference that chapter as.
Right, as you do in the purpose statement.
Yes.
Yeah, Debbie and Lori, your points are very well taken. And Lori, as you've pointed out, it's something that we have talked about many times and it's something that I just personally think about a lot, you know, on my own trajectory of where I'm, where I'm going. I it, it is. I know that we do have to separate things out to some extent. And also I feel like that has been part of what has brought us to this problematic place that we have separated things out and compartmentalized. This area used to be almost completely wetlands. And it's not anymore because of how we've developed. And, and it feels like the, the environment is not people, but also the environment is a stakeholder in the same way that people are, in a way that I don't think that we have acknowledged it to be in the way that we've developed and there's something to wrestle with there.
So maybe if, if it seems like Lori's suggestion is to sort of include a small paragraph there without going too far and say we have something in the purpose statement. It's sort of an acknowledgement and then, and it's there. And again, that might help with that cross referencing. If that would be helpful, we can certainly do that. If that's what the commission's direction is.
Derek?
Yeah, I, are we talking about putting a little blurb in this history of discriminatory land use and housing practices? Because I wouldn't want to see.
No, I would, no, 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 no. It would be, no, it would, it would be separate. So it's like apples and oranges here. So it would be separate.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that paragraph stays focused on what that paragraph is all about.
This is more like asparagus. No trees, asparagus. All right, any other comments? I think we're on five three right now. So hearing no other comments, we're going to go to page oh, five four. Which is a graph and then a paragraph at the bottom. I think it's mostly descriptive of of household, of another graph. No comments? Okay, now to five five. Five, six. Even less. Five, seven is missing a figure.
Right, I sent that out by email to you all today. I'm not sure in the conversion of the word document to the PDF, that figure just disappeared. It's very odd. Anyway, I apologize, but I did send it out to all of you.
Okay, thank you. So five, seven. Is a chart. Five, eight, or is that five, I did double do five, seven, five, eight. I got out. Numbers, so five, eight's the chart. So now we're to five, nine, which is another chart, H, figure H six plus some stuff at the bottom. Just for the housing target of three thousand seventy units. That was set by the county. Is that correct?
It was set through a negotiated process between all of the cities in various categories. So all the high-capacity transit communities, Kenmore is one, joined together with the county and, and it was negotiated and then approved as part of the countywide planning policies.
I do have another question. So that's from twenty nineteen to twenty forty-four. So we're already in that period. So how many of those have we already added? Up till today that we know of?
I could get you that number, but I don't know it off the top.
I think I would be interested. I don't know if others would be. Because we're seeing some large development going in. So I'm just kind of curious. Okay, so we're to five, ten. Oh, Mike, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Dwight, going back up to that same section you were talking to on five, nine. I read through the, this a couple of times and I think I understand it. And if others read this, fine, great. But, but I read this, I read that under the pace needed to achieve its twenty thirty-five growth target of four thousand sixty housing units. And then it says the city's next housing target, twenty nineteen to twenty forty-four is three thousand seventy units, which is less than what our twenty thirty-five target is, or is that are these incremental numbers and not cumulative totals? I, I've, I found that, like, I couldn't quite follow what you were getting there.
Yeah, it's, it's less. So that the, in twenty fifteen through this countywide process, there was a target set. And that was the four thousand plus housing units. And then as we went through in this go-round of setting targets. It, it is less and, and that may be related to the fact that different geographies in the area are having different expectations. So for example, there's a lot of housing being focused to Bellevue, Seattle, the bigger growth centers. And so because of that change, we in Kenmore may have a lower target because we, just by the way the regional geographies fell out. So it's not, it's not additive. It's a brand new target. It's a brand new number.
Yeah. Thank you. That, I kind of deduced that. Just reading through the, the language here, it makes it sound like that we've, where we're failing to meet the 2035. But we now have a revised of 3,070. So is are we, did we miss it? Or are we there? I, I think if you just kind of restated this a little bit to say, the prior target was the new target here. And here's how we are today, looking into the future toward that revised 2044, 3,070 unit target. I think that would be easier for my simple mind to understand.
And my simple mind would be, you know, there's a lot of different definitions of what pace really means. And I, and that's probably technical term that people like Lori and Debbie understand better than at least I do. Okay, so now we're back. There's no further discussion. Christina, do I see a hand flop up? Oh, no. Okay, I'm wrong. Okay, so now we're back to five, 10. Hearing none. We're gonna run off to five, 11. Tracy.
I have a question about the passage about, it's the last sentence in the first paragraph, future redevelopment of some of the mobile home parks to higher densities could provide additional housing units with affordability requirements. I'm wondering if that's a reflects a statement of policy or what, if there is policy behind it or I'm curious, I'm, I'm, I'm curious with more, for more, I'm curious for more information.
Yeah. So that change, I, I was recommending that change because if you read that last sentence, future redevelopment of the mobile home parks to higher densities could provide affordable housing units with affordability requirements. But in fact, the city council direction, so this was written in 2015. City council direction was and continues to be, whether it will be changed or not, I don't know. That some of the mobile home parks, those north of state route 522 may be subject to redevelopment after 10 years. That, that was their recommendation resolution at the time the manufactured housing community ordinance was passed. So I was uncomfortable leading this to somehow say that future redevelopment of, you would read it all of the mobile home parks, which was not consistent with council direction. So that's why the qualifier was put in there.
It was the policy aimed at the redeveloping that land after 10 years or was the?
Yes, it was, it was, yep.
So the policy wasn't to protect the mobile.
It was to protect the two mobile home parks south of state route 522 as best as we could in perpetuity without buying the property. On the north side of 522, the policy was to protect the mobile home parks as best as we could for a period of 10 years, at which point there would be a potential up zoning and the opportunity for redevelopment. That was city council direction, both in ordinance and resolution. And remains the city council policy while we're going through this lawsuit over the zoning changes. So.
Okay, thank you. That was quite clarifying. Thank you.
To summarize, what, sort of what you just said is because of the city policy from the city council and the lawsuit, we're not going to be touching those zoning areas in this in our deliberations.
Correct.
So we don't have to worry about this. Okay, is there anything else on five? 11. Mike, was that you? No, I saw it as I look at the Zoom cameras. I sometimes see hands flying around. So I'm just not sure. I don't want to miss anybody. Okay, five, 12. Five, 13. Go ahead, Mario.
Question on the ownership case here. And I, I'm just wondering if actually scratch that. I answered my question. Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else? We're on five, 11. Five, 13, I mean, excuse me. Okay, five, 14. Five, 15. Five, 16. Five, 17. I'm prisoner now. Five, 18. Five, 19. Oh, Tracy.
Yeah, this is a question to make sure that I'm understanding our situation correctly. And this it says within half mile of high capacity transit, there is capacity for approximately 3,500 additional new housing units. So is that to say that we are meeting our new target for housing units? I mean, we're exceeding it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Five, 20. Five, 21. Five, 22. Derek, no, okay. That's flying hands. Okay, five, 23 is it? On this one. All right. Now we're going to go to the land use element. Lori, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the most significant changes in this section really have to do with the maps. And the historic sites map, you can see the edits that map has not been completed at this point, but we did want to add the names of the properties to the map. And then we added a table that also shows the addresses of the sites. There's one thing that I said in the cover memo that is not accurate. And when we get to the land, Conference of Plan Land Use map, which we included in the element, but it's also attachment three to the memo. We were talking about it, the TOD area again. And when we get to the point of zoning, we'll be calling it something. But for the land use element in the conference of plan map, we just call it high high density residential. So just as we have low, medium, high, the area of the TOD is now high density residential, the area that's outside the urban corridor area. So I wanted to call that out because I, I had written something different in the memo and, and that was not the direction we were going with that.
So we're gonna move, move on. Thank you, Lori. So we're on four, A, one, A, one. A, two. A, three. A, four. A, five. A, six. Now we get the first historic resources inventory map. On any questions on that? A, eight.
Yeah, on that map, do we really have a historic landmark called delete? It's over kind of behind QFC there.
That's my little note to myself that we need to delete that one, which I think it was, it was called the Hartnett Grocery, Hartnett, Aron Love Grocery. Anyway, it is no more. So.
I thought I should probably go to that park before we got.
Yeah.
So now we're down to A, eight. And our first map. Existing land use map. No questions. So it's A, 10. A, 11. I like A, 11. That's easy. And now we go to our next map. That's the land use.
Right.
Land. Did I miss, did I get that right?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if I can, can I make a comment on something we've just passed?
Eight, 10. Taylor.
I'm just wondering why we have a lengthy passage about Kenmore Air Harbor in here? Is it because, yeah, I'm just interested about why that is.
Yeah, it's, it's a unique land use. And in fact, there are state requirements that we acknowledge the land use and provide information on it. You'll see actual policies, goal objectives and policies in the transportation element. But it was added here to respond to the fact that we, it's a, it's a business of statewide significance and we need to recognize that. So it gets its own section.
Thank you.
It's the largest seaplane airport in the world or something like that.
Well, in the United States for sure. All right. So we're back to down to what's actually A, 12, which is the current land use. This is the current plan, correct?
This is the amended plan. So if you'll recall, we talked about changing. We used to have, this used to exactly match the zoning map. So we had R1, R4, R6, R12, R18. And so instead of doing that, this is a more generalized map, which is what the Conference of Plan map is supposed to be. That shows low density residential, medium density residential, high density residential. So the area, the R6 area where duplexes and triplexes are being considered, that is shown as medium density residential. R1 and R4 are low density residential, as is R6 outside of that quarter mile area. And then high density residential is where it is currently, with the exception of the area of the TOD, which some was probably medium density residential, but thinking that the standards, the density standards would become mandatory. That now shows as high density residential. Other changes are really minor. Special study area for the lake point and glacier sites. That's now shown in cross hatching. The same with Bastier, even though it is a special study area, it's called out in the comp plan. It didn't have its cross hatching on it. We added a couple of park properties, including the one that on the north side, northwest side of St. Edward State Park. It was given to the state in exchange for the lodge development. There were, I think there's another new park property up in the northeast quadrant of the city. So minor adjustments really, except for the change in the residential designations to low, medium and high. And then we put the countywide center boundary that we had submitted to the county for consideration on the map as well.
Comments, questions? Tracy.
Is that countywide growth center something that we are able to adjust at any point? Or is that set because it was the boundary that we applied with?
We can adjust it.
So it's flexible. Is there an appropriate time?
I, I would say that now is probably the appropriate.
Can you please remind us what that boundary means?
It means that it is, a countywide growth center is an area of focused growth in our case, related to transit. And then there are certain expectations for how many jobs and housing units are provided. You have to provide parks and open space, which are already in the countywide growth center as described. Et cetera. So it's, it's basically like a little node of higher density development. Responding to our high capacity transit designation.
Yes, one concern I have is the same concern that I've expressed about the TOD boundaries is the capturing of those underlying R1 properties that go up 73rd. I understand that they're developed at a, a higher density right now. But I feel concerned about But I feel concerned about. Making them open to future even denser development. And then I guess also I. I I. I don't know how you do this without losing the ability to make a really nice. Fairly simple shape. But I I often do wish we had a more granular way of indicating. Where it would be appropriate to build more densely. And where it might not. It feels like a pretty big conversation, though. I mean, I don't, it doesn't feel as easy as saying, oh, I think you should just move it over a block, you know. To the west.
I I don't imagine that we'll get to the level of granular conversation, which would be a parcel by parcel analysis. That is not. Something that would be part of what we're doing. I do think if the rest of the commission. Uh, supports your point and wants to adjust that northeast uh corner of the countywide growth center. That is something that could be discussed. I think that, as you've noted, the the parcels. Already developed with a higher um density of development. I personally uh would suggest that that area of. Medium density residential that stretches out to the east, we should change that. I would recommend that. Uh, at this point. Uh, so that 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 would go to low density because that is um. Wetland. So I would recommend that change. And then if the commission wants to leave. The advantage of leaving it is that we can use those housing what housing units in our calculations. The chances of redevelopment, I would say, are slim. But uh that those are fairly. Fairly new developments, I think, through there, but I understand the rationale and if the commission wants to make that change, recommend that change, that's your choice.
Just I I may have lost what? Where are we talk? What were we talking about?
So if you look at the dark black line on the map.
Right.
And uh on the east edge of it, do you see the blue part, the big blue parcel?
Yeah.
That's the park and ride. And so the way the line is shown right now. It goes from the park and ride up behind the Montessori School and Mary's Place, which are the two. Purple parcels. Then there's a King County Housing Authority Development. Then I believe there is a town home development in the uh sort of gold brown color. What Tracy is suggesting is that seventy third, which is just on the west side of those parcels. She would prefer that those higher density parcels not be included because they are. Parcels that also have wetland constraints. Mind you, they're already in um easements, so development cannot occur. So that's the question. And the point that I was making is that if you look toward the very far northeast corner, there is a parcel. That for whatever reason, I know that that's in an easement, it still shows as medium density residential, so I think we should change that for sure. That was my recommendation. Uh, but this question of these parcels on seventy third that are the gold color and the purple color. Is what Tracy is raising, I believe.
That is a fair assessment, Lori. Thank you. I would support changing the medium density parcel that you noted to low density. Is that? Blue line just above those orange parcels, is that one ninety seconds?
The toll.
What's the toll? Okay, okay. So one night, so that that is up there. Okay, I see. The told, okay. And just on the other side of the tool, they're just like the the those are the properties that you that can, the land kind of dips down and they're just maybe like two houses, is that right? Yeah, okay. That helps me place it. Thank you.
Further comments on this map?
Well, I'm wondering what the, oh, good, Mike.
Mike, go ahead. You, Mike, you're muted.
And this is just a comment. Uh, want to invite the other commissioners to to take a sharp look at the deep purple in the center. Of our uh. High density zone. And this was actually pointed out by several of the developers in our conversation last meeting. About the size and irregularity of those parcels. And the challenge that that creates in having to attempt to develop those. I think this is something we're going to have to come back again and again to take a look at, because it truly is a barrier. Uh, to be able to consolidate all of those, to have a meaningfully sized development. Uh, and increase density, that's going to be a challenge for us. And we, this may be something we want to spend some time and think about when we talk about design elements. And what other types of things a city could do to help. Overcome uh. This historical uh land division here.
Yeah, so I I didn't hear a whole lot of commission. Um, feedback to Lori's question about whether other people supported moving the boundary of the. Countywide Growth Center, so I would asking again if there are any other people who are interested in considering that.
Yeah, I, so yes, interested. Um, and I. Probably vote for it, but we're not voting to move things tonight, correct, Lori?
If you want to change something, I I am hoping to bring back the full elements at your next meeting for a preliminary vote to get ready for the hearing. So if you do want to make that change, I would suggest that you. Decide whether you want to do it or not uh tonight. I think probably the one thing I would point out, I think would be very unusual to have. Area of downtown commercial zoning that's outside the countywide growth center, which is, and that's the purple. So if I were making a staff recommendation, if you do want to pull it in. To seventy third, I would suggest you do that where the burnt orange color starts. And include the downtown commercial zoning in the countywide growth center.
How do you feel about that, Tracy?
I guess I'm. I I understand the rationale for it. Um. My concern has always been and remains that if that opens up those parcels to future. Further density demands. Then that's not something I support. Um, and I know it's all well and fine to say it's unlikely that that will happen, but it could happen. Um. So I suppose that's where I am.
Okay, so. I, to um summarize, I believe Tracy is. Or did I see someone raise their hand? No, oh, I did.
I I think that what. Lori's indicating there on the the map line, um. It makes sense, I, for what we're trying to achieve with that boundary. I think keeping the like properties where I'm understanding it. Identified makes sense to lump those extra two little burnt orange ones in there. Um, I think it's kind of strange. I understand it. Not aesthetically a pleasing line, maybe, but it makes sense for the way things are zoned and forecasted.
So that's the timbers that are the burnt. Uh, that really dark. Red, or not red, but um. Whatever you guys call it, dark maroon.
So there are orange parcels or. Purple parcels north of the park and ride, which is the blue parcel. And then there are uh, I don't know what color to call it. It's like a brownish orangish color. Uh, up in the northeast uh corner.
That's that's pumpkin spice latte.
Pumpkin spice latte, there we go. That's the.
Good judgment there.
Yeah, I I think that doesn't. Fit with the rest. I agree, kind of with, I guess what Tracy was saying there.
So I think what I'm hearing is Tracy would prefer to take out the purple parcels. Uh, along seventy third. Uh, at I assume at the point of the park and ride. Up to and including the pumpkin spice latte parcels. And what I'm hearing from uh. Derek is that those purple parcels could be included, but the pumpkin spice parcel should be removed. So we have two different versions here.
Okay. Any further comments before we? Look to. Do something about this. Uh, Mario.
I'm just trying to get a good understanding. I'm sorry. I I understand the pumpkin spice parcels and the purple ones. But what about the the higher density, which is the housing authority? Structure there, the the red one or the maroon? Or am I misplacing my vision on the map? Like, it's late in the day, so forgive me, but. I I'm just trying to figure out if we are moving lines, like how does it affect all of that? The spot in the middle.
It it doesn't change the zoning. It's merely a an area that we would be designating as the countywide. Center. If it would be helpful for the commission, I'm happy to come back with two versions of this map. One, I would recommend if you took uh Tracy's approach and one. Which I would recommend if you took Derek's approach, would that be useful? Uh, maybe I could do a blow up over an aerial, so you could see what's actually on the ground in those in those places.
I think that would be a good idea.
All right.
Yeah, I was I was just trying to do that, but I didn't have a big enough screen here.
All right, so are there other concerns about the map? And we're going to be talking about that public. Facility up north in the next agenda item, I do believe.
Right, yeah, yeah. The the map shows the new public works facility just south of the junior high. In the blue area along the northern boundary.
Okay, hearing that, we're going to move to. The next. I can get my. This one is the. Astir Master Plan.
Right, and that's an existing map, so there's nothing really to change. With that, their master plan is approved and in place, so that will continue.
So now. I'm gonna go down to. I'll see, what's the difference between the last one and when we got next, which is.
There's nothing, there is no difference. I just I had included the full element and then I wanted to call out the map, so.
That's. I'm trying to get my. Computer to move forward here. All right, is there any last comments for the land use element? Hearing none. Lori, you're up on the next one. We are going to make it through it.
We are. So um, the next item before you is actually a complete element, your first complete element. This is the capital facilities element, and it's the one where we identify city projects, both those that are fiscally unconstrained, which means. It's over the whole uh twenty year period and those which are um. More tightly constrained over the time period of the capital improvement program. So the capital facilities element for parks was completed when the parks element was done a few years ago. Uh, the capital facilities tables for surface water and transportation have been adjusted. Based on changes that were in the capital improvement program that the city council has already reviewed. Both for surface water and for transportation, when the new chapters come forward and transportation is coming forward this year. Then there likely will be adjustments to these tables, so we'll likely amend it this time around and then we'll amend it again. It it's this particular chapter is one that you can amend every year in conjunction with the budget. And uh the capital improvement program. So I think the changes are pretty self-explanatory. The language about the public workshop was added a couple of years ago. And the really uh new and different project is the Affordable Housing Project. Which the city is undertaking. I think you probably got the press release today that said the RFP had gone out. For that project, so that has been added to the table. And with that, I will. Turn it back over to you. So what we're looking for tonight actually is preliminary approval of this, which would then uh go forward as um. As approved to the public hearing.
Okay, so this is our last. Effort or opportunity to amend for the record. Before we go to public hearing. Okay, so it's for everybody that. It's clear on this. So what we do tonight. Will will be published. So when people say we're really thinking about doing this, it's really true. Okay, I just wanted to. Point that out. A lot of the stuff we've been doing is in preparation to get to this type of stage. Of our of our deliberation, so if you really have a. Item that bugs you, this is the time. Okay, so we are on capital facilities element. And we're on, um, I believe it's eleven dash one of the final version presented by the staff. Are there any amendments? Hearing that, we're going to go to. Number eleven, page eleven. Dash two. Just to be clear, we're when when there's no amendments, we are approving the proposed yellow. Just so this is clear. I see, Mike. Uh, you're muted again, Mike. Mike, you're muted.
A suggestion, seeing that we've been through this so many times and so much detail, might we want to entertain a motion to go ahead and approve rather than walk through each element?
Okay, is there any objection to that? Recommendation, I'll give the um, if that's okay, I'll give the commission about a. Um, uh, like a minute to just go through and make sure that they. They've marked something up that they want to bring up that they have, anyone has an opportunity. To to do that. That the um tables. Capital Improvement. Program has been adopted by the city council, correct? Uh, Tracy.
Under Vision twenty twenty five or twenty fifty, I'm sorry.
Which page?
Oh, sorry, yes, this is eleven two.
Okay, thank you.
The bonus is final attachment one, yeah. Is everyone there? Okay.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm. There's a s- a statement about capital facilities being essential to communities. And so on, they often affect the environment and adjacent communities. And then it, there's a statement about um. considering equity, but then there's no further statement about environmental protection, even though proceeding, there is a statement about how those things can affect both the environment and people. I'm wondering if it makes sense just to add something about environmental sustainability.
Would you like to make a motion? Oh, Lori.
Lori's waving her hand.
I don't know if you're batting flies or, or you really want to talk.
So, so I am comfortable with that, but that is not policy language from the planning commission. I can go back to Vision twenty fifty and see if I can find something that is appropriate to plug in there. But I'm uncomfortable going beyond Vision twenty fifty. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, it looks to me like this is all Vision twenty fifty language. I just find it curious that there was a statement saying that we were going to, you know, actually do something about the impacts on equity, but not that we were going to do something about the impacts on the environment.
Yeah.
And maybe it's in twenty fifty. Maybe you, maybe you'll find something.
But right now, we're going to leave it as it is.
Can I make a movement for Lori to look into finding into twenty fifty and seeing if she can find language?
Okay, the motion is to allow our staff to make an addition to Vision twenty fifty that is appropriate to environmental concerns when she can find such reference in the Vision twenty fifty document. Is there, is that a good motion for you, Tracy?
Yes, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please just raise your hand. It's unanimously approved. Is there anything else on this document that anybody would like to bring up or make a motion to amend? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to that this document will be published for public hearing at a date to be determined. Is there, Mike has made that motion and the motion.
No, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you
Wait of order. Can, can we make that motion when we still have an open question that has to come back at a future meeting? The motion we just passed, Tracy's motion.
Well, what Tracy's motion was is to allow Lori to make that amendment without, essentially without having to come back as long as it met that standard. But if you would like it to come back first, we can
No, I, I wasn't aware that that was part of the, the motion that we, we voted on. If it is, then Mike, I have no concern.
If it is, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I, Lori, did you understand that?
I, I did. And I also want to reinforce, this is not your final recommendation. This is, is what would go to public hearing, then you hear from the community. Then you may still be tweaking it before you make your final recommendation to
I know you love to tweak it with us. Okay. So is there a motion to take the revised capital facilities element document as amended to public hearing? Someone make that motion. Okay, I've heard that Derek has made the motion and seconded. Now, and discussion, Mike?
No, I was seconding.
Okay, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the members raise their hand if they are in favor? Eyes?
Hi.
Is there, that's unanimous. So I'm hoping that's asked for days because all the members who are here. So the motion is passed. Lori and Debbie, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Nope.
Great. And what's on the docket for next meeting?
Yeah, I was going to speak to that. So your next meeting, which is on March fifteenth, is the time when you will be doing what you just did with the capital facilities element to the land use and housing elements. So I'm going to take the changes you requested tonight to the background sections and add that to the changes you requested to the goals, objectives, and policies, and bring back the complete land use and housing elements for your consideration for the public hearing. And I'll also bring back the final version of the vision statement for you to, I, I think you there may have been one slight change. I'll have to go back and double check that. But those three items will be on your agenda for approval for the public hearing. We won't be then moving immediately to the public hearing because the next thing he'll be talking about are the missing middle housing code amendments. So we want to include that with the public hearing. So the community has a full picture of what we need or missing middle housing.
Could I ask any, any commission members that have any concerns on the items that are coming to us at the next meeting to talk to Lori? And maybe she could develop so that she's aware of what the issue is and maybe do a paragraph or maybe come up, work with you to wordsmith something ahead of time so that we can just move right through it. Because I, I know that when we look through things again, we sometimes see things that we didn't discuss during the meeting. Is that okay with you, Lori?
Yeah. So after the packet comes out, are you suggesting then if, if folks want to get in touch with me before the meeting about wordsmithing?
They can call you even before the packet comes out if they have a burning idea. Because I think you'd like to hear about it.
That would be nice.
But also after words, it's okay to, I, I just like to, sometimes these discussions can be done offline and it's easier. And then there's something ready to take action on. Okay, anything for the good of the order? I'd like to, yes.
So Dwight, just to help me in, along in my own understanding and development, would be, we go back and look at the last land use and housing elements documents that we looked at, for example, to know what we might want to address offline. Lori.
Go ahead, Lori.
So I would suggest no.
Yeah.
Because you actually were at the meeting and I heard feedback from the whole commission about changes that should be made. And so I don't think it would be appropriate for a single commissioner to suddenly well, you certainly could bring forward a totally different perspective. But I would be working on the, the direction I heard from the commission as a whole. And certainly we could present an alternative. But I, I would not feel comfortable going into a significant amendment. I mean, if you want to wordsmith something that we know the commission endorsed, but I don't know how you would know exactly what that was without me having made the changes, which is why I was suggesting to wait until after the packet came out. So.
It may, maybe rather than getting into too much detail, if the commission, after they received the packet and go through it, and if there are particular sections that you, you know, you're going to want to talk about, just shoot an email and say, I, this is, we're going to want to talk about this for this reason. Don't need to give any details of how you want it to be worded. That would be helpful to have a heads up. But we can't really go in and start making changes. That would then get very confusing at the next meeting.
I, I never suggested that you would be making changes. It's just that, like you said, if there's some wordsmithing that could be done, you have to, that has not been approved by the commission and you need to be ready to make a motion for that at the next meeting. And that changes to the element would require a majority of the commission to approve. It's kind of how Robert's rules work. So.
Yeah, and I was just trying to identify how I would know that I had concerns if I had to remember from the last meeting or if there was some document I could look at that was out. That was all. And then I also am wondering if, I didn't get an email about this, so maybe not, but I'm wondering if staff knows if the presentation that was given by the Optico's president to UW, if that was recorded. I don't know if we're, were any of you there on Thursday?
I attended it, but I, I, I would guess that they recorded it. We don't have copies of it, but we could pursue it to see if there were if they did record it and we're willing to release the information.
I was there as well and I don't recall them saying that we would be sharing, recording, but it's going to be this. I know that there was the question, they were asking her, because there was a lot of interest in the slides that she presented and folks wanting a copy of that.
Well, I was there too, but it, just in the interest of being able to go back and review it, if it's an appropriate use of your time, if you could figure it out, that would be awesome. If, if it's not appropriate, I can certainly do that myself. I found it informative. And if other commissioners didn't see it, I think it would be informative for you as well.
Right. So if there's no objection, I would move to excuse Nathan from tonight's meeting. Is there any objections? Please have a minute show that Nathan was excused from tonight's meeting.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. So Plan Commission meeting for March first, twenty twenty two is concluded. Thank you, everybody. Especially the staff. Great job, Lori and Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hi.
Hi.
Everyone.